...meeting this evening. We call the regular meeting of the Minion County Planning Commission. We'll give a few introductory comments and as usual make sure your cellphones are turned on. Any final action taken on conditional use permit application tonight will take effect five working days following the meeting unless a writ of appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the Planning Office by Tuesday, May 31st at 5:00 p.m. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, June 21st at or after 9:00 a.m., meaning that the County Commission are held in this same room. Any final action taken on preliminary subdivision plan tonight will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing Tuesday, June 21st or on or after 9:00 a.m., meaning that the County Commission again are held in the same room. At this time, the Planning Commission will consider this consent agenda. The minutes of the April 25th meeting are included on the consent agenda. Are there any objections from the Planning Commission members to any item on the consent agenda? See, none. And next I will read each item on the consent agenda. If any member of the audience objects to the item, please raise your hand and the item will be removed on the reg-- from to from and be put on the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. And also at this time, for those of you who are on the consent agenda and all other agendas, you paid $50 for a sign that was placed in front of your property, please return those signs and get your $50 back because the counties are desperate needing those signs to go through them rather quickly. But again, come back and get your deposit back and return the sign because we do need them. Okay? So we'll start with the consent agenda. Again, the minutes are on that agenda. Item two is a conditional use permit, number 1627, to exceed 1,200 square foot of total accessory building area requesting 3,200. And this is located at 43-46346, 261st Avenue, approximately a mile south of Hartford. Item three is a conditional use permit, 1629, to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building area requesting 1,700 square feet. And this is located at 26-675 Douglas Avenue, approximately four miles east of Sioux Falls. Okay, item number four, conditional use permit to exceed 1,200 feet of square feet of accessory building requesting 15,500 square feet of property legalese, which is located at 4708 4, 257th Street, approximately half mile east of Crooks. Item number five, conditional use permit, 1631, to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building requesting 5,904 square feet. That's at 46-685 256th Street, approximately three and a half miles west of Crooks.
Questions?
Um, so I'm here on behalf of my grandfather who owns a property near it. If we want to object, we don't know what's the building on it. Do we object now or do we?
Yes, yes. That's, uh, that was item number six?
No, five.
Five. Moving up to the regular agenda. That's fine. That's why we do this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I think a lot of times people don't come to these meetings that often and the deal is that if you don't object, then it basically goes right through. And if you do object, it doesn't mean you object to it, it just means we'll have a bigger discussion about it.
Yes, that's fine. Okay, thank you. Okay, item number six, the conditional use permit, number 1633, to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building requesting 2,520. This is at 48-548 Westover Place, approximately one and a half miles north of Carrot's. Looks like a tri- on split rock here. Item seven, conditional use permit, number 1634, to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building requesting 10,875. This is located at 476146, 257th, approximately a mile east of Crooks. Okay, item number eight, conditional use permit, number 1635, to transfer four building eligibility's. And this location is approximately three and a half miles north of Sioux Falls. Bradley Peterson is the petitioner.
You have one objection.
Yes, okay. That one will go on there. It's regular agenda. Okay. Item number nine, conditional use permit, number 1636, to transfer two building eligibility's. Petitioner's James Holback and it's approximately five miles to north of Sioux Falls. Okay. Item number 10, conditional use permit, number 1637, to allow temporary retail sales of fireworks on this property, which is at 48-130 Highway 42, approximately two miles east of Sioux Falls. That looks like a pre-harm guard center.
Used to be, yep.
Okay, item number 11, conditional use permit, number 1638, to allow temporary resales, temporary retail sales of fireworks. TJ Cameron is the petitioner. It's adjacent to the southeast side of the city of Orlando. And that is all our items. So our condition, our consent agenda with exclusions of item five and eight. We're going to move to the regulars. Read a motion to approve the consent agenda and move those two items to the regular agenda.
That's my motion.
Set aside.
Okay, that's motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Now, if your, remember, if your motion, if you're other than item five and eight, you have been approved and you are free to go. Thank you. And please return your signs, by the way. Okay, we'll start with item number five. Who's presenting this one? Okay, David?
Good evening, Planning Commission. David Heino, Planning Department. Conditional use permit, 16-31, is to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building area. The petitioner is requesting 5,904 square feet. The petitioner already presently has, if you go back, skip forward here. So petitioner currently has an existing barn that is located on the site that is approximately 36 by 64 is located right here, next to the existing house, which is located there. Petitioner also has a 30 by 40 hobby shop or shed, okay, just to the west of the barn. And the proposed, the requested size is for 40 by 60 shed is located over, I can't see it in this image, but there's an existing shelter belt around the property and this is actually a field, as you'll see in some of the pictures going forward. There are a few other properties in the immediate vicinity, I'll skip back here, that have accessory buildings, total accessory building sizes in comparison to petitioner's requested area. Just a quarter mile to the north up here and has approximately 4,592 total accessory building area. And the petitioner's lot is double the size of the parcel to the north, as you can see. Basically, just double the size of that matched up here. This site, petitioner's size of their lot is 8.1 acres and this is roughly a four acre, four or five acre parcel. On many tents, staff visited the property and determined that the proposed accessory building size is appropriate for the immediate area, located on a roughly eight acre parcel. Took some pictures of the site. This is just an image of what that 40 by 60 building would look like, two garage doors and one couple of doors exit and looks like a few windows too as well in the building. Moving forward, this is that, that area I was talking about, the pasture and the shelter belt. This is on the, that wraps around the property and covers the entire property all the way around, along the road, township road there. Moving forward, this is the driveway that the petitioner, this is the residence at the end of the driveway. And then moving forward, this is the 36 by, 36 by 64 barn in the foreground and the background, you see the 30 by 40 with the garage door there in the driveway that leads to that. This is located to the north, the property that is roughly the four or five acre parcel with the 4,500 square feet on the property, about a quarter mile to the north of the property. And then this is located to the west, going about a half mile down the road to the west. There's a few, few buildings on this site. It's not really in comparison to the size, but there's, it's similar, about 4,000 square feet of total area. So just some of the criteria that we go through in determining conditionally, or the appropriateness of conditional use permits. The effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses already permitted and upon property values in the immediate vicinity. Is one on their property within a half mile of the subject property that has a building size relatively comparable to the petitioner's requested size. It's unlikely that the proposed accessory building will have a detrimental effect on property values in the immediate vicinity, as you can see on the map. The proposed building will be used for the property owner's personal storage. The area is primarily agricultural with five residential acreages located in the vicinity, three houses along the road here and then in addition to the two houses that are located just about a quarter mile away from the subject property. Two, that the effect upon the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area, the accessory building may only be used for residential purposes. No commercial or business activities are allowed. Given the size of the other larger accessory buildings, a 5,904 square foot building area would be congruent with the land composition and lot sizes. Three, the utilities, access roads, drainage and other necessary facilities are provided. Access will be provided via an extension of the petitioner's driveway. As you can see in this image, extending beyond that road to get to the 40 by, the proposed 40 by 60 shed. So no, no further infrastructure that will need to be provided. Four, that off-street parking and loading requirements are met. No off-street parking will be needed due to, the areas that are around the building itself will be needed as a result of residential activities of the building itself. There's no commercial or business parking allowed on the site. Five, the measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration and lighting, including a lighted sign, so that none of these constitute a nuisance. No offensive nuisance shall be permitted at any time during the use of the proposed accessory structure. The use of lighting should be directed downward onto the property in order to prevent light pollution of sight. Six, health, safety and general welfare of the public and the comprehensive plan. The proposed accessory building should never affect on the health, safety and general welfare of the public. The use of the accessory building as stated in the narrative will be used for private use and storage, will create few problems to neighboring properties. The subject property is located within the agricultural production area of the, that is identified by the envisioned 2035 comprehensive plan, which recognizes the, that the primary purpose of the area is to protect, preserve and promote agricultural uses and the economic vitality of farming operations. The proposed use of the building will be for personal storage and should not affect the surrounding land uses. With the existing shelter valves around the property and the site itself, the staff, so staff finds that the requested total accessory building size is relatively comparable to the existing accessory buildings in the immediate vicinity. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit, 16-31, with the following conditions. One, that the total accessory building square footage shall not exceed 5,904 square feet. Two, that the accessory building shall not exceed 35 feet in height. Three, that the building shall be in accessory use to the continuance of the property as a residential lot. Four, that only personal residential storage shall be allowed in the building and no commercial uses or storage will be allowed at any time. Five, that outdoor lighting shall be of a full cutoff and fully shielded design to prevent direct spillage of light beyond the property boundaries. And six, that a building permit is required to, prior to construction of the accessory building. And I'll answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Any questions of David? Now, let the petitioner come forward. Thank you. State your name and address, please.
My name is Kate Burkett. Uh, address 46685 256th Street, Hartford.
Okay. Any questions? Or in the conditions or anything? Okay. Do you understand what cutoff lighting means? A lot of people don't.
Just don't let it spill on your property.
Standard old yard license, you just, it's got to be shielded so it goes down.
I don't plan on putting any, any kind of lighting on the outside.
Right, any questions of the petitioner? Yeah, thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to address this, or you've heard and you've been satisfied? So, that's good. Okay, so do I have a motion? There is one to approve.
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. So we'll move on to number eight. Who's presenting number eight?
Good evening, Scott Anderson again. Tonight we have a request to transfer four building eligibility's. As shown on the parcel, they're moving them to a track five, which is on the, it's, it's near the intersection of 257th and Highway 115 on the way up to Del Rapids. The applicant is Bradley Peterson. The applicant is moving two eligibility's from the west side of Highway 115. This area, there's like 150 acres, I believe, here. And there's like 80 acres in here. So you can see there's two eligibility's here, two eligibility's here. He's requesting him to move them to this 57 acre parcel, which is called Track Five. And as you know, we review these items to determine that they're not building, that they're not moving these building eligibility's closer to anything like a confi- animal confinement operation, they are not. Actually, they're moving, you can see this is Silver Creek here and this is the Silver Creek flood plain. So there's quite, there's quite a bit of flood plain there. They're also moving these eligibility's out of the flood plain to a different area. This is also a shallow aquifer area. So they're moving, there's a benefit to move those out in, out of that shallow aquifer to a higher area. What are they, when, when we are clustering this many building eligibility's together, you will note in my staff report, I indicated that they will be required to bring in a preliminary plan. So you can review that to determine how they eventually want to develop all five of these building eligibility's into residential lots. It does meet the criteria for zoning density. It's contiguous and under the same ownership. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit, 1635, with the condition that each lot has to be platted and a right to farm covenant notice shall be placed on the deed prior to the issuance of any building permit. It is already a requirement that they bring in a subdivision, a preliminary plan, once they reach five lots. So that is a requirement already. I will show you the pictures. You can see it's, uh, right now, just a vacant field. There is a cell tower located right in the corner of that property, right here. There's a cell tower and that's a picture of it. And I think there's also a picture of, anyway, that, here's, the 57 acres basically is just this large field. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from Scott?
I have a question.
Just wait, sir. Let's have, we'll finish you and then you can come forward when it's your turn.
I just wanted to ask you where I'm at on the picture.
Okay, okay, we'll get that clarified.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's it?
Yeah.
Any questions? We'll have the petitioner come forward first. I guess there are no conditions on this. You have any questions of the commission?
No. Uh, my name is Jeff Peterson. I live at 2574475, which is this property. And I represent Brad. I have power attorney. I also have a action by written consent form to do this. We really don't have a plan to develop it at this time. Just want to move the housing eligibility's.
Okay. Question of the petitioner? Okay, thank you. Now, it's your turn. Anyone else in the audience who'd like to address this? Please come forward and we determine where you're at.
Okay, thank you. Hi, uh, my name is Keith Meremo and I live at 25738 475th Avenue, which is, I just want to know if this little white dot is me. Cause I can't tell, cause all it is is black. I'm trying to figure that out.
That's good, just figure out where he is at.
I have no idea. This is...
What is that?
Well, there's a house there. There's a house right here. Is that?
Okay, wait a minute. I have a house in a shelter belt and, and the property, the question then surrounds me?
The property that they're moving the eligibility to, and I think I talked to you on the phone.
Yes.
And I indicated to you that they were moving these eligibility's further away from you.
Okay, yeah. But can they then come later and take an eligibility, they're moving them up here, can they take it right here?
They'd have to bring, if they were to do that, they'd have to have another hearing and you'd be notified.
So if their eligibility's are up here, why is this piece included in the?
Because he owns land. That's, he, the applicant owns land that goes all the way around your property.
I sold it to him. That was a hell of a mistake.
So they're moving, they're moving two eligibility's here, over to this track five. And they're moving two eligibility's over here, over to here. So they're actually moving them and you live right here. That's your property.
Okay. So Jeff says that they don't intend to develop it. Where'd he go?
Right there.
He says you don't intend to develop it. What are you doing it for?
Just to get two out of the flood plain and to move them to that road. If the eligibility's are developed, they'll be on that cell tower road.
257.
257, yes. Okay.
Okay, when do you plan to sell this stuff? My wife is on my back.
Really?
So you're gonna have to come forward if you're, so we can hear you, but you're gonna have to come here by the...
Yeah. You can come and stand to me next to me. I've been with you biggest, my whole life.
Uh, we, at this time, we haven't really decided what to do with them. You know, just get two out of the flood plain, move to, to that track up there.
Okay.
We haven't really decided the size for the lots yet, but...
Okay, so this is all future considerations.
Is that it? It would be, they'd have to go through this again?
They have to come back to us with a development plan.
Yes.
And you will be notified on that app.
Okay. And right now, are they, they're saying, you mentioned five eligibility's. That's the farm?
There's only four.
Four.
That, that's not correct. I was mistaken. There's only four. Track five has no eligibility's on it. So there's only four and you can see the four they're moving. It's right here.
Okay. Is the farm included in this square? In this thing?
No, the farm is over here. But this is, you were basically here?
I'm here.
Okay, property took, you know, this right here, that first mile.
Where's that farmer's land at? I thought that was it.
57, it is, it's up here.
Would it be, yes, sir.
You're not telling me, right, you're incorrect.
If you could, guys, if you could use the cursor, we would know what you're talking about.
I don't know about cursor. He's telling me that...
I just made a mistake.
Okay.
Put them next to, name roll is this out there.
The farmer owns this.
Yep.
And I own this and you're putting four eligibility's up here. And if you change that, it's my understanding, you're gonna have to come back here.
Uh huh, correct.
Okay.
Yes, that's it?
Thank you.
You bet. Anyone else care to address this issue?
Clarification of north.
Go ahead. Directionally?
Uh, yeah. So I'm just, just confirming from our previous Peterson eligibility...
The top of the map is north, David?
The top is north.
North is up.
Okay, so we're moving them, all within a cross.
Yes.
Thank you.
They'll be moved east.
They'll be moved east, right.
Yes. Anyone else in the audience care to address this issue? Come forward, please, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Paul Evenson. I live at 2, uh, 4, uh, 47594, 257th Street. And that would be about, well, it would be on that 257th Street, a half mile east from the northeast corner of that proposed development. I come here and I'm speaking in opposition to this. The two that, two eligibility's that they're talking about in the flood plain could be utilized across the road because it's a housing area already. Right in this area. It's a housing area already. It's not in the flood plain where that would be. Mr. Anderson talked about a, I don't know what you termed it, low, you know, high water or something.
Challow aquifer.
Challow aquifer. But, you know, I'm very familiar with that land. I farmed it for, I think, about seven years. Consequently, there's good drainage on it. It's some of the sandiest soil that I've ever seen in that area. So there's good drainage on that land. I believe those two eligibility's should stay on that side of the property. If you go across the road, there's already three houses or three eligibility's already there, where Mr. Peterson lives, where Mr. Meremo lives and Mr. Tramela lives on there. And in, in the spirit of keeping one eligibility for every 40 acres, that would only leave one eligibility unless something was grandfathered in some years ago. Uh, one for every 40 acres. And there's already three houses there on that quarter section. The other thing I'd like to say, you know, and I've heard the term used orderly development and without a plan in place before they come here tonight, I don't see that as orderly development. I served on the township board, Mapleton Township Board for three terms. And consequently, when we talk about letting people within 500 feet know about what's happening and the zoning, we're not even going back to our township board and, and letting them know in that Mapleton Township is in that, that three mile area that we're talking about. Consequently, I stand opposed to it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions, Ford? Anyone else in the audience care to address this? Come forward, please, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Don Oshlager. I live at 6705 North 10th Avenue. I am currently a Mapleton Township Board Supervisor. I have to agree with Paul that I, we currently have 16 housing developments in Mapleton Township. When I see moving housing eligibility's, four in a pod, to me, that looks like perhaps another cul-de-sac coming. What happens is, some of these housing developments are presented to the landowners or perhaps the buyers and they'll be sold and they want to represent who has the roads. We don't have the roads. We don't take the roads. We have 16 housing developments now. If you petition with us and come and ask us to take your roads in your housing development, we do take them and we have up to this point, but there's a, a time coming where we probably can't take anymore. We have 33 miles of roads, 16 housing developments with full maintenance, two housing developments with snow removal only. It's a, it's an expense and a burden and I also would like to be part of the planning. As Paul said, these things come up and we happen to see the signs, so consequently, we're here in opposition to this. We would rather see, you know, the two stay over on that side of the highway and perhaps the two that are already there spread out. I don't know how they would do it, if they would go in with a single driveway and a cul-de-sac or how it would be planned in the future, but that makes us have to watch for another sign because we're not notified. We would like to have that notification as a township order and know when this development's coming. We understand that the body in the city of Sioux Falls is a lot of growth. Everybody kind of wants to get out in these, these developments. I myself live in a housing development, so, and I enjoy it. And when it's coming, it's, it is a good burden. So we would kind of like to, like to know when they're coming and what to plan on. You're willing to move these over there, then what?
The next step would be a planned development.
Preliminary plan.
We have to present preliminary plan development.
Well, make sure that when they sell those lots, that those people buying them understand that they're probably gonna have to have their own, their own road maintenance.
Yep.
Yes.
A lot of people... A lot of people don't understand that.
Yes, we have, we have a split rock township, four blocks right here, so we know...
We know, know mine. So...
We know about roads, although our township does section lines only. So, if you go out and do something, tough luck, we do section lines only. Okay, thank you. Anyone else care to address this, anyone here? If not, we shall close the floor, call for discussion or action. Mr. Chairman, I would ask Scott, uh, you know, that concern about, uh, the road district, uh, small residential development is required to have one, aren't they, these days?
Uh, each plat would be required to indicate how they are going to maintain the road. So, there's a statement on the plat on who maintains the road.
So, if the township volunteered to care for it, then that would cover them, or if they had their own road district, that would also be it?
As Mr., um, as Don indicated, um, they certainly can approach the township, and they can negotiate with the township for the maintenance of the road. If the township chooses not to maintain the road, then it would be up to them to maintain it themselves. But they can, they can accept the road, but that would need to be indicated on the plat. That's why we do the preliminary plans, so we get these things worked out on who is maintaining the road. If there's gonna be a road association, or, or, uh, if the township's gonna maintain it, or if it's just gonna be a private maintenance agreement with just that person, with those owners.
And Mr. Chairman, uh, they'd also have to have an agreement with the township, wouldn't they, to have a driveway and a culvert or ditch?
Yeah, they have to have an approach permit.
So, they probably couldn't get four of them, or whatever that...
Well, that would be up to the township, they certainly can deny that many access points, but that would be another thing that we would look at with, with the, um, preliminary plan, on how many approaches they would be putting in or proposing.
Um, Scott, one of the questions, or the two of the people brought up was around notice provided to the township, and so, um, can you clarify for me currently what's in our ordinances, what the obligations are of, of the applicant, uh, in order to obviously notify the contiguous landowners? What's the obligation to notify other, you know, governmental bodies if it's across, say, an adjacent county, or in this case, uh, existing township?
The only notification requirements there are, are if, if the property, if the conditional use permit is within one mile of a county, a, a different county, we are required to notify that county, the auditor, and likewise with a rezoning request. We are obligated to notify the adjacent county. But we are not ob, there is no obligation to notify townships.
Mr. Chairman? So, if that was, if that was going to be changed, that would require a change to the ord, the county ordinance?
That would be correct, and, and I would say that, um, the, there is another mechanism. We post hearing notices on our website, so that is a two-way street. Townships can also monitor our, our ordinance, or our, our county website to see if there are any items that might be pertinent to their area. Secondly, as they indicated, we post large green metal signs on the property, which serves as another method for people to be notified that there is some kind of request that's occurring on that property. So, there, there are, there's more than one mechanism than just a notification, a cer, a, a letter that goes out to the property owners.
And the burden, the burden on that notification is on the applicant, right?
That's correct, the applicant sends out, the applicant sends out the notification, the letter. And they also post the sign.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Mr. Barth? Scott, uh, basically, there's, uh, several properties involved on this transaction. Did we post one sign, or did we post, uh...
We posted a sign to where the receiving property was located, so, where, because...
So, the donor ones, we didn't post a sign?
No.
Okay, just asking.
And, and the reason for that is because, you know, theoretically, these, they're now taking away, uh, an impact to these areas, so there would be less impact. The, the impact or the, the cause of action would be located on this property, and that's why you would post it on that property.
Thank you. Finally, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to be, make perfectly clear, you know, I have sat on a township board, which I no longer am on, but, you know, when we did take on anything within a development, our planned development, it had to be within, between the township and the people that live there, and that roadway had to be up to spec, state spec. That means that it had to be a certain width, had to have a certain content of whether it was gravel, or clay, or whatever it is, so that everybody knew, which, you know, because you're gonna be, at some way or time, you're gonna be assessing them, I would hope, for the maintenance of that. So, whether it's between, like I said, the landowners or the township, it needs to be in perfect conformance of what needs to be done. It'll be a lot easier in the long run. I mean, I've been in one of those developments where things didn't work out too well.
So, once you get that all stated, then it depends on what the real estate agent says it is, so that's the way that goes, unfortunately. So, we have, we're looking for action on this item? Move to approve?
Second.
Motion second, always signify by... Saying aye? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries, and we will be dealing with the preliminary subdivision plan right now, believe, item number twelve.
I'm gonna forward it and we'll...
You wanna see what the law is? Here it is.
Good evening, this is, uh, item number twelve, it's a preliminary subdivision plan sixteen dash one. This is, uh, a request located, uh, about five miles north of Sioux Falls, six miles north of Sioux Falls, and it is located on two fifty, two fifty-fifth street and on the east side of Highway one fifteen. The applicant is proposing to create a five-lot subdivision, and, uh, they, we just moved two eligibilities from here, from, we moved two eligibilities to this parcel here, and, as you know, we, the company has a subdivision ordinance, and I have reviewed the subdivision ordinance to make sure that all the requirements of section four oh one have been met. And the applicant has provided all the needed information for a preliminary plan, which I believe has been included in your packet as well. This information included detailed topographic information, a typical cross-section for road construction, a grading and drainage plan, and an erosion and, and an erosion control plan. The five lots with, in this subdivision are proposed to be between three acres and eight point four acres. The entire subdivision will utilize onsite wastewater systems, which is our, our septic systems, and will be connected to Minnehaw Community Water. The applicant is dedicating, uh, Helen Trail, a cul-de-sac, as a, as a road, and prior to final plating, the applicant shall either construct Helen Trail to the county's road standards or post surety for the cost of the proposed, um, construction. The engineered road plans have been provided, and the applicant has already purchased a roadside for Helen Trail. The applicant will have to address the future maintenance of Helen Trail, as we just had a very good dis- conversation about, and should the applicant, uh, create a homeowners association to maintain the road, a copy of that, uh, of the covenants will have to be submitted with the final plat to make sure that maintenance is addressed. And should the applicant work with the, with the township, that would be, um, an agreement that they would enter into with the township for the maintenance of Helen Trail. But I will go over, uh, some of the pictures for you. There, if you, uh, if you look, there are two lots, here, here, down at the bottom, and then there's one lot here and one lot on here. There is already a, um, building permit that was issued for the, for the parcel. You can see, this is, this is going to be Helen Trail and the cul-de-sac, this is looking back towards two fifty-fifth street. You can see the engineer, I, I tried to get a picture of this, they've already staked and did some surveying for the road, and that, it's shown there, oops. Somehow it went... Well, um, the, uh, that shows primarily the, um, the, the pictures of, the slides of the property, and I have included, I believe, all the detailed information for the road construction, the erosion plans and, and such, but I'd be glad to answer any questions, our recommendation is for approval. It has met all the requirements of, 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 uh, section four point oh one, which is the subdivision ordinance dealing with preliminary plans. Subsequently, this will need to go to the county commission for approval. The county commission will take action, and then that will allow the applicant to bring back a final plat, which will be approved administratively.
Two fifty-fifth is a township road, right?
Yes, it is, it's a gravel road. And I think the applicant's here, if you have any questions.
Any questions of Scott? Should we call the applicant forward? Not, just hold back, come forward, please. Questions to the planning commissioner or the staff?
No, I don't, um, just maybe as a little bit of introduction, Jim Holbeck, I now live at two seven three three nine Ridgeway Road in Harrisburg, and looking forward to the day that I'm gonna move up here and get back on the country, where my roots are. We bought the first section, that's the rectangle on the left, about eighteen acres, and the whole plan was that, uh, both my family and my, a couple of my kids are gonna move out there, so people jokingly refer to it as the Holbeck compound. I'm just hoping we're all talking together after a year of all living next to each other, but that's our goal. We had six eligibilities, and the lady who had eleven acres, which is the next, um, square off to the east, wanted to sell off some land, came to me, knew I had some extra eligibilities, and, and so, um, it was kind of a good marriage for both of us. It was able, allowing us to spread out these eligibilities into little bigger lots, we're not looking to cram anybody, um, in there. My son's house, that's the one that's going up on that, that property to the northwest, he is building his house real close to the south side of that property line. And we're going to, um, have my other son across the road, will be doing the same. Our whole goal is to keep a good buffer zone between our houses and all those houses along two fifty-fifth. It's our, it's our desire, um, to have our own ability to be away from, um, crowded too many people, and, and also for their sake. So, uh, we did talk to one of the neighbors, had some concerns about past, um, water runage, runoff that came off of this property onto his property into his basement. And so, with the construction of the road, um, uh, I think that we can build a berm and take care of his problems and, and solve what he's had before there was any houses there. So, uh, we're just looking to be good neighbors, we're looking to get out in the country. I have Paul Corn with Sayre, and we've been working with him from the get-go on this. I don't wanna go in here and do anything wrong, and so, um, we've hired his services to engineer this, see how this will lay out the best and how the road will work. So, I'll turn that over to, to him if you wanna hear any of those, um, bits of information. And I'll stand by for questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, petitioner? Anyone in the audience like to address this issue for this one?
Tony Lee, two, uh, four seven five six three, two hundred and fifty-fifth street.
Where are you at, Tony? Are you right in the houses?
I am right here. So, last spring, just by changing from a row crop to an alfalfa, I had four inches of water in my basement. So, I am currently in renovation, and we have run tile all the way around the house. And we were assured by planning and zoning, back when the eligibilities were transferred from the flood, floodplain to behind this field, that there would be a floodplan put in place. Okay? We're also, pardon me?
Run, water runoff?
Correct. Okay? I'm lost, I'm...
Just can we move around, it'll come back?
We're also told at the time of transferring eligibility is that this half-mile road was gonna go all the way across the field to actually discourage traffic from two fifty-fifth. On top of that, this is either, there's either two or three building permits that have already been approved prior to submitting a floodplan, or I call it a floodplan, but a water drainage plan. I'm gonna have well over eighty thousand dollars in the fix in my house, so do we get any compensation for, uh, some additional brown?
Thank you. So, could I have, you would have, talk about drainage issues, please?
You know, Paul, come on up.
Paul can put from Sayre, please, since this is...
Let me, um, just make a comment first.
But to go back, why were building permits issued prior to a plan being subjected, and why wasn't made so that the half-mile road plan was taken off the table? Where is the conduit to communicate the information from when the conditional use was already done the first time to the prospective owner? And where is the accountability then for planning and zoning to uphold those conditional uses that were put on that property?
Prior to this, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, they basically have building eligibilities there now. They build on any of those. Would prove the building permit through, would have to have a conditional use before we went into this subdivision thing?
There were six, there were several, I think, six building eligibilities there, and Mr. Holbeck came in and we discussed with, he discussed with me whether it would be possible to start the construction on one house, and I indicated it would be because they're not subdividing it at this time. And I did make it clear to Mr. Holbeck that, uh, when he, in, in order for him to build anything else, any additional house, he would need to submit a sub, a preliminary plan, and he has done that. And to address, I think, um, what Mr. Lee has indicated, part of the requirements, as I indicated in my review, was a grading plan and a, and a drainage plan, which the applicant did provide, and I'll let his engineer discuss that with you. So, he has met the criteria for a preliminary plan, and has submitted that with us, and that's what we're reviewing right now.
Of course, I, I don't have any control over whatever happened before, I just know that I bought eighteen acres and six eligibilities, of which six houses could have been put into this eighteen acres, and, and now it's gonna be, at the most, four, probably three. So, um, it's very much our concern that we're gonna have a road that works, we're gonna build it according to the specs, we're gonna cut the ditches, and it's gonna take care of the drainage. And so, I'll have Paul talk to that, but we really don't have a lot of ability to stop water from running downhill from the way it's been running forever.
Yes, uh, Paul Corn, uh, civil engineer with Sayre Associates. Could I just have you scroll to the grading plan? Or, do you have a...
It doesn't wanna go to that.
It doesn't go to that.
They have...
Okay. But anyways, I guess, this development, we're, we're not altering any drainage pattern, basically. The land was, was, the slopes like it currently does for, you know, as long as the earth has been created there, I guess. And, um, you know, the land was used for agricultural purposes, whether it's row crop, whether it's alfalfa, for, you know, it certainly have the right to use that agricultural, uh, land for those different uses, so, I believe this, this, uh, concern is at the low end of, of that property, basically, where that water is drained, um, all the time. So, what Jim had indicated that we would do then along the property line is we would intercept that water by building, constructing a, a small berm, basically. So, as that water flows from south to north towards his house, we would build a small berm along the property line, directing that water to the west, getting it in the, the street ditch, or the roadway ditch, and then going, continuing north towards two hundred and fifty-fifth street, so... So, um, you know.
This is just a field right now.
Yeah, it's just a field right now. You've got two, three houses that are going to go out there. Uh, obviously you've got different runoff coefficients, whether it's alfalfa or whether it's row crop. Uh, but we're not increasing the runoff. We're not changing drainage patterns. We're going to try to help the issue by constructing a berm, directing that water towards the ditch so it's not flowing under this property.
Okay.
Can I just still comment?
Yes, go ahead.
So by changing the use of the land, you are changing the runoff, right? Because now you're putting in a rough line. You're not allowing the soil to absorb the soil, you know, the runoff. So by adding homes and everything else to this area, you are changing the use of the land. And again, I don't have a problem with how this is being constructed. I have a problem that what was originally discussed in the conditional use is not being upheld at all. And that goes back from when they said that they needed to move the eligibility's from the flood plain to this property. There's the issue. The issue is there's no conduit and no accountability. Pardon me?
When was this done?
Uh, I would suppose that was done back in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. But I think what you need to realize is that.
You're not going to fix it.
Well, they have a, they have a drainage, a drainage plan, but that wasn't, that wasn't a condition of approval of the transfer, that there be a, a, a specific development road. The, the condition was that they had to submit a preliminary plan, which they have done.
There wasn't one. When you just transfer eligibility's, as you just witnessed earlier, there is no preliminary subdivision plan.
So why weren't we notified then that that property was getting changed again? Because there was originally nine or twelve eligibility's that was transferred up to this property. Some were sent to the south where there was more construction. And then these were sent to the north with then farmland put in between. So there should have been some type of a conduit again, because you have, there was actually Sayre Associates were up here when the rest of us as a community were saying, hey, two fifty-fifth is beat to death every day with the existing traffic. We never get any, we luck, we're lucky if it gets graded twice a year. Okay? This is the half-mile road. I maintain that road and I actually do the snow removal. Where's the help in that? So the, again, I, I'm grateful that they're willing to put in a berm. The problem is, is there was no communication, because you had a Sayre associate, somebody up here, when they wanted the conditional use to move the eligibility's from the flood plain, stating, well, we're going to put a road all the way through. We'll make that so that actually has the drainage. And then they were actually going to put an additional ditch just to the south of our property to help with any additional runoff. Because again, a rough line sheds water, row crops, and so you're changing the use of this land. And the idea that you're not changing the runoff is fictitious.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Lee, you know, I certainly appreciate your comment there about, you know, it does change the permeability of, uh, of the surface area when you have roofs and driveways and roads. On the other hand, changing it from row crops to alfalfa, that has nothing to do with, uh, what we do. That's, that's just a property owner, uh, you know, changing their crops. I mean, they could put in a pasture or whatever. But how should the drainage go? And what would you recommend as far as to, uh, the applicant on this project? How would you like it to be?
I would like to go back to what was originally discussed when the eligibility transfers occurred. The road goes all the way through to the other half-mile road with full ditches to accommodate the runoff.
So going to the north for another half-mile?
To the south.
To the south for, okay, for another half-mile.
Well, yeah, it was going to tie in the two half-miles because they wanted to put all the eligibility's together.
So where does the water go now? It just hits the road ditch and then spreads out?
Hey, pretty much. When there's row crops there, I get several wheelbarrels and skid loader buckets full of black dirt across my yard.
Sure.
Okay. The alfalfa has helped with the black dirt, but it has not helped with the actual water runoff. And I have added culverts. I've put in additional. I mean, and then last summer I put in, you know, two tiles, nine and a half feet deep around my house and at five foot deep. It's not that I've been negligent and haven't tried.
And so is that surface water or it's not groundwater coming at you?
We know it's not groundwater, just because we dug a seventeen and a half foot hole and it stayed dry.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I wonder if the applicant may have any comment on the drainage in the neighborhood? As far as, can you help him as far as?
Let me, um, just address the road. It's certainly not our desire to have a road go all the way down to the next half-mile down. It's our goal to stay up there and keep that as a private area. I think that when you create a road, you're going to create a lot more traffic, of which I don't know if that's going to do anybody any good. So I certainly wouldn't want to see that request go forth. Um, this berm could have been built on Mr. Lee's property. Um, we're building it on ours at my expense. I don't know what else I can do right now.
The only other thing I guess I would add to that is by extending the road further to the south, we're, we're still not changing the drainage pattern, basically. There's, there's kind of a crest in the middle part of this development. So you have probably eight or nine hundred feet that's going to continue to drain north. And then it gets to the crest and then it'll drain to the south. So extending the road isn't going to change the drainage pattern out here. So the road is going to follow the terrain of the ground.
Mr. Corn, if I may, uh, uh, do you think that, uh, your plan is going to, uh, benefit the drainage in the, in the neighborhood? Or is it just going to keep it the same or?
Well, I think.
Clearly the berm is going to.
I think the combination of the berm and directing that drainage into a ditch along the roadway versus letting it continue to sheet to the north across, uh, this gentleman's property, I think is an improvement, yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything further, Mr. Lee?
I'm not opposed to him developing there. I'm opposed of how, when Pete, Wade Peterson, a lot, you, when this was allowed to have the eligibility's transferred and then it get changed in midstream with no notification to anybody. So they can sit up here as potential landowners or as landowners and promise the world to everybody sitting in this room, oh, that we're going to put a road through, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. Yet none of it's ever carried out through. And when I asked about actually amending the county ordinance, the first words out of my, that I was given back was you can submit with a three hundred and fifty-dollar application to amend the comprehensive plan so that there is a conduit or a communication method of what was constructed at the conditional use. That's not right. That's where I'll end it.
Thank you. Okay. Commission? Discussion and action?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I do think quite often that, uh, communication is one of the, the key issues in all of our Albers thing. And it's, it's, uh, very difficult to adequately, uh, pass the word out to everybody one way or the other, whether it's, uh, talking or writing. Anyway, uh, it's hard to say that there's any point where we do too much communication. I do think that, uh, this is not an unreasonable plan for, uh, for this piece of land. And, uh, I, I hope that any, any concerns of the neighbors can be, uh, worked out with the drainage working properly. And I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion of second, is that a motion?
Second.
Here, a motion of second. Any further discussion? Yes, Bill?
Yeah, it's, and Mr. Lee's point, I think, if I, if I'm understanding it correctly, to the commissioner's thoughts, that oral statements made in a, in a hearing room, um, they're simply that. They're oral statements. Unless and until they're written down or physically included into a conditional use permit, um, often that they can, can and do change. So I'm a little unclear if the previous conditional use permit has any bearing on this decision. I'm left with the impression that, that it does not because it wasn't written down.
They were just transferring. Any other comments, discussion? Yes?
I just think that a lot of times in a situation like this, uh, continued good faith communication between the parties can resolve a lot of issues, uh, as opposed to turning your back on each other and, uh, being, uh, not, not communicating. So I hope that any, uh, other concerns can be at least discussed amicably.
I need one more comment.
The floor is closed. Thank you. Okay. Okay, we have a motion of second for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, if motion carries and, uh, challenges, the motion can be referred to the county commissioner.
It will, this automatically goes to the county.
Okay, county commissioner will hear this Tuesday, June twenty-first at nine AM. Honor after. What else have we got?
Uh, under.
What is it?
Under old or new business, I'm not sure what, what you'd like to call it, but, um, I've been, uh, Commissioner Jeff Barrett contacted DENR and talked to Ken Woodmansey and asked, uh, if DENR would be willing to come to a planning commission meeting and do a presentation called DENR's CAFO regulation and oversight process. And so I've been talking to Mr. Woodmansey and, um, I would like, uh, to know if you'd like that on your next meeting, June, and about how much time you'd like to listen to, um, oversight process and their CAFO regulation, um, requirements. So I can give him some, um, direction.
What did he, did he give you any kind of idea?
He can, he can structure it so it could be ten, fifteen minutes. He can structure it so it's half an hour. I think a little bit, I think it involves a little bit about enforcement and, um, their oversight, uh, what they do, how they, how they are monitoring existing CAFOs, that type of thing.
Mr. Chairman, uh, one of the, uh, sort of common thoughts people have about the DENR is they, they don't do anything. And, uh, therefore when we go to approve a CAFO, uh, the expectation is we put all these conditions and then they can, you know, sort of dump all that crap wherever the heck they want. And, uh, that's clearly not, uh, what we hope. And I think, uh, enforcement of our, our things, whether it's by the DENR or county staff, uh, can alleviate the concerns that our citizens have. And there's not, again, not enough communication between the DENR, Department of Agriculture, the county staff, uh, for the people that are, are concerned and for the people that want to have CAFOs. So anyway, that's.
We should be able to have at least half hour on a meeting.
Pardon me?
A half hour on a meeting.
Be plenty? Okay. I'll say not to exceed half an hour. I'll let him know. And it'll, it, we'll put him on the agenda for June twenty-seventh. Because it lead, what, what worked for him was either June twenty-seventh or the meeting in August. He had some conflict in July. I don't have anything else.
Okay. Yes, I did have one question for staff. We had mentioned the, the idea, should we amend the ordinance to provide notice to the township, that governing body, because of the issues that always seem to crop up with roads and traffic and, and whatnot? Can you tell me, Scott, procedurally, how, how would we go about doing that if, if we wanted to amend the ordinance?
Well, we would have to, um, we could prepare some wording for you and then you would just direct staff to change the ordinance. And we would do a hearing notice. We would have to, and then a hearing notice, we have the hearing here, then it goes to the county commission. It's like a rezoning, follows the same steps as a rezoning. There's a, we set the hearing date at the county commission, we publish it in the papers. And then, uh, two hearings at the county commission, they adopt the ordinance. And then it becomes effective twenty days after the minutes are published in the paper. And, um, that's certainly, you know, an option if that's what you would like to direct. If you want to have that, that anytime, uh, there's an application, it, what we would need to do is we would look at, because I think in each section for like conditional use permits, there's a section on the notification requirements. And, and variances, there's a section. So we'd have to, we'd have to change variances, rezonings, conditional use permits, preliminary plans, anything that might come to you, um, temporary uses, trying to think what else. Primarily, uh, I, you know, like tax, we don't do, we've only done one tax increment financing district. But, you know, anything that would require to be heard before the planning commission, we'd have to investigate that and make sure that we review what the notification requirements are and then we could add that in there somehow.
Whether it would be blanket across all of them or you would refine it and define it and say for these four types of applications.
It would be up to you. I mean, if you want just, I mean, we, we do, we don't do a lot of variances, but if you want like variances, conditional experiments and rezonings to, then also include a notification to townships. Um, the, you know, the, the issue that you have and it's, and I, I, don't get me wrong, I'm not, I, I don't want to say I'm not in favor of it. But we, we as staff aren't always necessarily privy to what, what townships have agreed to. Because like, take example Benton Township and Hartford Township, they swap roads and they take care of this road. And, you know, then once again, I don't know what roads townships have agreed to. And then we potentially are going to run into, if we tell the applicant to notify Benton Township and the road was actually a Hartford Township, I'm sure that we would be potentially obligated to, that we didn't do our notification correctly, if it should go to court. And not, not to say that this happens a lot, but I know that like when we did the Gustafson gravel pit, that is, that, that road is actually on Benton, Benton Township. When you have roads that meet up against each other, they sometimes, gentlemen, agreement.
Every mile.
And I don't know. I mean, you know, I don't know how that all works, what townships take care of what road when they meet up. That Bonnie.
It, it becomes very complicated, um, depending upon where the townships are. Some are more concerned about the roadways and also the conditional permits that are out there or the rezoning or whatever, plan developments or whatever happens, or even CAFOs as far as that goes. And some aren't. But once we get into a gray area, you folks, and where, just like you said, you know, where we've got a difference of opinion about where it belongs, just like where Split Rock is, you know, some of our roadways are intermixed with you, the county, the city, and then you've got complications.
Well, we also had, uh, last year, the CAFO that you worked with, Elbers. If you remember that, there was three townships that were all buying, jockeying on who should be, who, who didn't get notified and yet they were all at the meeting, but, you know, that they, who had control and, you know, why'd you notify? I, I, I don't know. I just.
Understood.
Well, I mean, you're going to, you, sometimes it's just like a no-win situation, but I, I'd be glad to, if, if it's, if, maybe we just notify the, the township that the parcel of property is in and, and we could word it that way and then we've met that obligation. But just like that Elbers thing.
I'll talk to Bonnie here this, this, later this month and get your perspective from a former township board member.
David, did you pass your planner three test?
I fell short. I scored a forty-nine. You need a fifty-five to pass. I had the test on Saturday and a three-hour test, a hundred and seventy questions. Twenty are not graded and they don't tell you which twenty they're not going to count towards the exam. But overall, I mean, it's a good experience for me and just to, just to be able to know and, you know, going through all the studying. And there's a lot of focus on theoretical knowledge of planning and the backgrounds and how things came to be and, and other planning law cases. There was this strong.
We all have our theories on planning.
Emphasis on that. So at least I know what, you know, there's the study and to focus on in more depth so that I can, well, I mean, things could be different with the test and, I mean, it's, overall, it's a very hard exam. It's comprehensive planning for a reason. And some people don't get it.
Good luck next time.
Get it next time.
Deal maker. Move to adjourn? Okay. Second. I think we can, in favor, say aye.